I will do a prayer and ask Mr. Johnson to do the prayer. As you know, about the thought on our school tomorrow, because I think we kept it, took off for the school bus with our kids. Our business father, he couldn't be present, thank you for that. Thank you for all the good and all my support, and um, realize God together, we can make people. And thank you for your grace, thank you for your mercy, thank you for the son of God, we know it's possible. I pray for his children, his victims, not one thing, but of his parents. I pray big journey of them as well. I pray, you know, the summer before, that's been good for them. I pray for his country, his state, his parents, his community. I pray for our school, when you can walk on your school, that's what I'm praying, for us. I pray for country, I pray for peace, I pray for the state. So a lot, a lot to thank going to say, uh, but I do realize, you know, if you were to run the trouble. But I do thank the state that here, I do not, we all are, all the current owner, we need that.
I pray, I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Michael Cheetham?
Here.
Mr. Kyle Blenkin?
Here.
Mr. Chris Hall? Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Here.
Dr. Christie Oakland?
Here.
President Louis Kent?
Here.
Your voice are true again, the one that did it to you. It gave us the day, at the time of prayer. Good Mr. Hall, thank you for that, for your question, question from your office, you know, all the things?
Ah.
In a home, even if it's. Okay, home there, a doctor from July seventeen twenty twenty three, forty. Um, who's already too heavy? Thank God for you, in this question, question from your office, you know, all the things?
Ah.
In a home, what you. A doctor from July seventeen twenty twenty three, president, who they are the president? So who, who is the senior? Thank you for that, for your question, in this question, question from your office, you know, all the things?
Ah.
In a home, what you. This is not a minute from July twenty seven, twenty twenty three, best of the. Who's about to start over? Thank you for the job, in this question, question from your office, you know, all the things?
Ah.
In a home, what you. See, on the new building, this girl, take action on the little permit, that's a clear from the cabinet, chamber of Congress. This is a little couple, I told him ninety two, twenty twenty three, got twenty eight thirty five hours, nine fifty six. Mr. Dana Ford, is she here?
Are she supposed to be coming, so?
Well, look, I'll come back, thank you.
Can I ask a question on that? Isn't a part of that area drawn?
It's drawn, yeah, drawn.
It is, he just had, he's all good, he's, he's had something there for, um, Conservation Association, CCA. But there are non-precious, all the information is in the packet, like we did last time, so, okay, that's the reason.
This is a non-precious.
Yeah. My question? You will, this person passed a venerable, and the question, that's the doctor, venerable, Mr. Dowd, and Mr. Jones, who is here? First one is taken, I call my two office, and that's in the comments, the call, did you give your update?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Is it good or bad?
That's, that's what we just said, it's good.
If you call the demo, thank you.
He won't see the talk.
Yeah.
He needs me.
You want to come up here? You don't want to talk to us, so maybe you.
Oh, yeah, you want to talk.
Okay, okay, I can ask you, um, there's a road bridge, there's, there, I live in public, we're not bridge dealers. This got piled, and for fifteen years that I've been having enough to drive piled. So, we are having a meeting on Thursday, the public works committee to discuss pre-fabricated bridges. Y'all might need to get ready to think about that because we just can't deal with it. We can't, we don't know how to drive piles, West Felicia, I said they would come and show us one day, but one day is not teaching us how to do this. When states expect to come behind us, and inspect these things, we just can't do it, so.
Pretty much, what you told me.
So we, you know, y'all, you know, we know Thursday, we want to, and the guys who, um, we're talking about the bridges, and ask them questions, and they're supposed to give me three options, but I haven't had any yet.
I told Mr. Webb about the meeting on Thursday.
What's that?
I told you about the meeting on Thursday, and when I.
Yeah, y'all are having a meeting Thursday, I thought it was last Thursday, this Thursday.
Yes, sir. The Friday, it's the Wednesday, thirteen.
My, my guess, my question is, is, you know, we've been, we've been coming to these meetings for a year now. Started off, we were going to repair the bridge, and we can't build a wood piling bridge anymore. We're going to get a concrete bridge, can't afford a concrete bridge, it's a million dollars. And we got all the material, we purchased all the materials to build the bridge, we purchased the piles on the bridge. Now we can't build the bridge, we back to getting a concrete bridge, which is a million dollars, and we can't afford. I don't, uh, well, whatever it is, I just, I feel like we just getting run around. We coming up here and y'all telling us what y'all want us to hear, so we leave you alone, and we have to come back and talk to it, and some different everybody to come.
Let's do, we have, we have talked to them, probably, piled out of the company, you got a pile, you approved, they're listening to the old bridge, but with correct chance, but you cannot build a bridge, you don't have a crew to build a bridge on.
Why would you go by all the material and the piles to build a bridge if you couldn't build? You don't have money to build a bridge, but you buy all this material, and now you can't build a bridge, I don't understand.
We still don't buy it, and she made the recommendation, the call.
What's that?
She made the recommendation, so we took her recommendation, but we don't have a crew to build a bridge.
None of y'all, this police jury, knew that y'all didn't have people employed by y'all that could do it.
Well, she said, we have requested a company come drive a pile, move the old bridge, which they could agree to.
I mean, this has been going on, it's fixing to be four years now, and we've been fighting this. I talked to Ms. Bennett today, and he's, he's not sure what he's going to do at this point.
Mr. Gray, would you clarify this, or do I need to do it, best I can? We approved to have a company come demo a bridge and drive the piles. And what happened was, when they came, the best I understand, they couldn't do it for that price. So that put it back over here on us. Now, evidently, they're not telling you that, it's no secret, that's what's happened. That's why the island was called, that's why the wood was called, and, uh, that, that, up until that point, maybe it wasn't kicked. But the trouble, she tried, and we tried, and we, the money's just not there, so.
So, and I'm going to back up what you said, because you're right, we approved.
What did they tell you?
Yeah, it was.
Four hundred and five thousand.
How many of a thousand dollars it was? That's why we bought the material, because we could save ten percent on it, on markup from those guys. They were coming to demo and drive the piles. So I thought, when I saw you guys tonight, I was like, I think, oh, we need to approve that. I didn't know that it been kicked back down the road.
That's our problem, too, we don't know, between. This is first we've heard this.
Yeah.
First time we heard this.
I think of meeting or two ago, we.
I can tell you.
I believe you.
April twentieth and June fourteenth, I made six calls to Ms. Gwen's office. She never got none of the messages, okay? Between July tenth and August second, I made nine calls to her office, and I finally had to talk to you, Mr. Ken, to talk to somebody. Every time I called, I talked to some, I talked to a fellow named Yell. He says he gives her the messages, she tells me she don't get the message. Nobody's communicating nothing with us, okay? We have to come to this meeting, you won't let me come for three times a year to discuss this, but that's the only way we getting any information from y'all.
So where are we at right now, the company said they couldn't do it?
Y'all know the background.
I'm on the market, little guy.
Because they can't do.
Somebody's telling me back down.
I know it's code.
Because they can't do what they thought they could do before, six thousand dollars, they can't get to the bridge, and we don't have equipment to do it, even if we could, they have all the equipment.
Sam, if they give us a bid and we accept it, can they legally back out?
It depends, is it a written bid, did they sign it?
It was a quote.
It was a just a quote.
It was just a quote?
No.
Yeah, it's just a quote, you know, you need to go through the bid process, and if they, you know, accept the bid, you know, you have a right at that point, but.
Okay.
If it's just a quote.
So where are we at now, because we got all.
We got all the security, thank you, we just don't have the manpower and the equipment to.
So let me ask a question, somebody had made mention one time, and I think I even picked up the telephone and called, about West Felicia, coming from Lewis County driver, and we're going to.
Oh, that's, that's, they come, come one day, they have, they have work to do on their own, and their council would say, I can go come to Feliciano Parish and build a bridge, we've got work in y'all's hands.
We want y'all to be good neighbors, that's why.
That's what they say, they say they could come one day, and show us how to drive piles, but that's not going to work.
So.
That's why my neighbor for trying to be good neighbor, but after four years, run around, they get burned, right?
So what did they say they could do the job for, or they just said we can do it?
They are coming on Thursday.
That's where we meet. Who are we going to come, it's two, three of us?
It's, uh, one company, and I got a number on that on top.
That's the problem, that's, that's the concern.
When did these people back out?
Couple of weeks ago.
So very recently.
We just approved.
And they went up there, and they saw they couldn't even get their equipment here, and they would have, bill road, all kinds of protection stuff that they didn't know. Why I don't know, they didn't know, since they had been up there before, but they can't do it for that, and that's what they told me.
Start to finish, what did they say would take to build a bridge?
That's why they coming with the, with the pre-fabricated stuff, because you can come to the meeting, they didn't tell me all that stuff.
I can't, I can't take off or console, or I can't pay attention.
Well, they did, they did.
Well, this same company is going to bring the pre-fab stuff, or are we dealing with one of the pre-fab companies?
They are going to tell you about the company. Mr. Blenkin has the guy that he knows, that I'm proud of, he works with the company, and he works, but I didn't, but I didn't hear, so, maybe.
Somebody give me ballpark numbers. Somebody give me, no, no ballpark.
That's what.
We didn't come there for this, too, I was on the floor.
Because I got a friend of mine, he just did it in Wilkinson County, and he did a pre-fab, and it was like two hundred seventy thousand dollars.
Ask your meat, which y'all told us.
That's what I'm saying.
Concrete, concrete.
Well, they said it would be a free spanning bridge, I'm assuming they'll put the bolt heads on each side, and have the free spanning piece to do it for us.
It could be one of those U shape, in very few, I would say, it could be a general hospital, that the local proclamation, thanks, they're going to try to, quote, you know, to be in.
We're trying to figure out some way to get that bridge to kick.
So.
Because we, we still got another problem, we got one with our concrete road, we got all those people out there that are standing there, that's bothering.
Group would call in there, like a group, you know.
So what we're going to do with all this material, y'all, with corporate, I'm missing anything. Cut Rusty Shanna's, because they drive them every day over that building with bridges, and now.
I mean, we got midway, that we want to fix something with, we got a roof, we got to do something with.
I understand that the roof road bridge is a priority for people that are, we've been waiting four years, we've been talking to y'all for four years. We're not getting anywhere, we have gotten nowhere, nothing's done, nothing.
I thought two weeks ago you guys were going. Until tonight, I had no idea this.
Well, we all did, to keep it buried, I thought two, three weeks ago.
I, I thought you guys were going, uh, I heard the deal.
So the decision is going to be made Thursday night?
I can promise you, it's coming into this settlement with this problem on, really.
So let me ask you a question. Because if, if we do a pre-fab bridge, and we meet about it on Thursday, then it's got to come back to the jury, then we got to find money to do it. Would it be easier just to find another pile driving company that can come in and drive the piles, because we have them to, steep wise?
Okay, well, the people who are coming to talk about it, they were the people who were going to drive the piles in the first place, and they discovered they couldn't do it, for a total of six thousand dollars.
I understand that.
Maybe they might come, they need to give us more information, and tell us how much more there is going to be, and give us a concrete price for what it's going to be, I mean. Ever since they.
I was going to say, they said they couldn't do it for that.
I mean, you give you three options, I don't know what they are.
Well, as I understand it, this company gave a quote without even coming to look at the job, that is. I mean, if they looked at it, and they made the quote, now they're saying that they can't get all their equipment back there, then whoever came to look at it, wasn't looking at the job.
But according to, according to that, you got to come.
Well, no, I know that, but when they come Thursday, y'all need to walk them out to where the job is, and make sure they know what they're getting into.
They've been there.
Well, they've been there.
That's why I wanted to pray to them.
Seems like we need to invite some of the companies to come in.
Yep.
I don't know what we need to do, but I can see, obviously, gentlemen, the look on their faces.
I am also.
Well, I mean, I'm just with you, I just feel like we getting run around. I've got, I've got a law book for every meeting, every phone call, a person I talked to, the date of the time, and what was discussed since last year. I didn't bring it with me, but I can bring it next time and show you, if you think I'm not getting run around, y'all got four stories, A, B, C, and D, we packed today.
We made full circle, yeah.
With trial, it gives no concern, it's not easy, it's fixed, okay, now.
Nobody's communicating with us.
Now, I just, I call you, they sent.
I know he did.
They sent a call today, I think I told you, I told you, I tell you that?
Yes, you did.
And then change.
She did call.
Okay. But she's the one who tried to give you, and she granted regulation back to you, and you're grassing out, or we're still waiting.
Let's just meet with these people.
We don't know, there was a bad thing, may have been.
And if we came for giving a pen, we need to move on, we need to move on to someone else, we need to contact some other person on the meeting.
Say five thirty thirty?
Yes, sir.
In this room?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do my best to do this. One other thing, Mr. Kent, we came, the last meeting we came to was on March the twentieth.
I recall.
And we discussed with you about getting some work done on the culverts on the venerable, small covert, was a thirty-six inch covert there that the loggers had crushed.
Right.
Y'all made her replace it, and put a twenty inch covert, how the road is washed out, the road is lower than the covert, so the water runs across the road, keeps it, you know, keeps it tore up. That's a big covert, plugged up, had loggers in it, water goes across the road, and all the gravel and everything, I mean, it's the same way, the covert gets half full, water's going across the road. If they asked you about getting some field material and gravel, and changing that covert out, you said you'd take care of it.
They recommended.
And I believe if you, if you'll go back and look at the minutes on that, or the video on that meeting, twenty-one minutes and thirty-eight seconds, you told me you was going to take care of it.
I talked to a, but what's going to get you, or not on the government.
Been up there, bracing the road twice, and it's not a problem, they just cutting the hole deeper.
I'm not a woman, the government tell the problem, you take care of it.
That big covert doesn't have three inches of dirt on it. No, the big covert's exposed. It's almost exposed to traffic. I mean, you're the, you're the president of police.
Yes, sir.
That's who we've been talking, you the one that told me you was going to do it.
No, the government told you.
He didn't tell me you was going, but then you said you'd take care of it, a little bit of your work.
What I've been talking to, you can have that, I cannot get sure of whether you do the work, to do the work.
But that is something that our crew can fix, we should be taking care of that.
Take, take care.
That's no problem.
So y'all told Ms. Gwen about that problem, that you need to be taking care of it?
Because we have a rule that.
How many covers are there?
One thirty-six.
Well, if it was a thirty-six, you could find it, it's down in the branch down there, it's a fiber blaster.
Have you seen the?
All get trucks crushed, they put a twenty inch back, or a twenty inch.
So you need a thirty-six to replace a twenty, and then you have a thirty-six that has three inches of coat?
No, it's a six sixty, I think it's a sixty or seventy, two and a half. Maybe have two inches up there on it.
Mission, mission.
The other places where the road is washed out lower than the covers, it's got to be built back up, or, there's no water flows through that cover. And there's debris in the vehicle, we dug some of that.
How long have you been, how long have you been, since the coverage?
It's been six years?
It's been for.
Five, six years, then I'm a dog, I'm two, I'm a dog.
We had put a bridge in it, done it through it, and we just took it out, that gun on the forty, forty fifty, it could have committed a project, we put a bridge in it, it's not going to be cheap, I promise you. It could be more than forty-six thousand dollars, I'm checking it out. We got, we got to find somewhere to get it worked out, and go, we got to work out on Thursday, it's be here five days, and you give us an insight also.
Okay, we're good. Thank y'all.
Thank you. We got to go and take care of the current now.
Do we need to spend, do we need to spend ten minutes with the.
Well, as if you possibly, I, I know, like, I'm very grateful that Midway got fixed, and I know the lift is wrong, but that situation sometimes just a little something, ease in there, get off the side, go in and start. Demo in the bridge, if you can't do it for one day at a time, you got to go in there and start demoing it down, and getting it out, that will save money. And whenever we do get somebody, because it's no sense, I, I would say, if they didn't do it for forty-six, I'd say a hundred fifty thousand, by the time they cut in, you know, and that would be, maybe.
We have to wait till it kind of prices will be on the.
Well, I'm just saying that scenario, that's what it's going to be, but we could, it leads demo a bridge, over period time.
Are they able to cross it at all?
No, this, this.
They go to Mr. Dennis, he's.
So they can't, there's no one they can cross, with anything?
No, I'm going out there, you can't cross.
That's the range, that's what the whole problem is, that is going to be, it's down to this.
Let's move on. This guy take that laptop and that's a, recruit review of road, immediately, to determine feasibility of that time, Dr. Coles.
So I don't think I have any of the residents from language line here, but, um, we should receive a letter, and, and they come here and they talk with us a little bit, and we've done work. I wanted to see if we had done the things they asked, and I have a list of things that we're doing, IDW, so it's not that we ignored them. But they would like to get their road blacktop. I'm having to tell them, we're not taking any new blacktop roads. And what I wanted to ask, one of the things tonight, we have not been, uh, open about it lately, I understand it was discussed several years ago. Could you, one of y'all who were on the jury, explain why we decided, because I've told these people, it's because we don't have the money to do it, but can you elaborate on any of that?
Because a gravel road, you can send a motor later to repair it, on a hard surface road, you have to send a pothole patcher out, and then if it gets so bad, that doesn't even fix the problem. So the philosophy was at the time, that there were so many hard surface roads in Darnley, we were not going to go blacktop, a gravel road. When we had hard surface roads, it was just tore up.
And so we came together and we said that we would not do any more gravel roads until we got all hard surface roads repaired and repaired. That was the reason that.
You're a long way from that.
And y'all are a long way from that, and I can tell you now, it's not the time to even try to think about doing a gravel road, because it costs so much more money now than it would have been, and we just don't have the funding to do it.
Well, and, and I was hoping that they could be here, that they could hear, because I think they're, they're reasonable people, and they would, you know, understand what you're saying right here, but we got in there. They're, they're saying, well, you weren't even there, you don't know, well, I'm here now, so I'm going to.
To perfect out, those people came here years ago, and wanted to get their road done, we've been, we even maintained a motion last year to go ahead and try to do it. It would cost one point something million dollars to do one.
Well, I would like to see and get a cost on what it would cost to fix that, to get our engineer out, our engineers out to look at it, to determine what the cost would be to fix that road.
We already, we already have a ballpark for what it would cost to do one, but, I mean.
I think there's some other things on that road.
Big engineers are going out there to take and do surveys, which we know we're not going to do it, I mean, that's just costing terrible amount. Because I think, if I'm not mistaken, every time we call those engineers to come in to do assessment or something, that costs thousands. And I mean, it's not cheap either. So, I mean.
I still would like to have them determine feasibility of white carpet, because I think there's some things that would come out that the residents are not aware of.
They can't cover the condition.
Things like that, that.
And which we cannot make them do, we cannot offer, make them put covers down, um, Mr. Alvo had a road in his district, was the same way, and you can't fix one or two, and don't do the other seven or eight, because it's not going to do any good, and, and by law, the jury cannot force them to put down a cover. And go in on the road, and you go in and try to repair it, just like putting the band-aid on the sword, is all you done, so my ladies come, come on.
Is the way we were.
I, I think about all we can make, because it's impeding our drinking, I think we can make them, I just don't think anybody sitting here is going to force someone to spend a couple thousand dollars they don't have.
But you can't make somebody do something that they're embarrassed of.
Well, I think.
Everybody can make them, he makes it, bring him into court, but, but, you know.
What you do is you got to get your bids.
It stays off.
Nobody wants to.
It stays off, saying we cannot buy covers, place covers on the drive.
That's right.
We cannot do it, in the past, different years and years, when a girl came over, illegally from the girl to buy a cover, and put it somebody private driving.
I'm going to ask a question.
Please.
Uh, why couldn't we, as the jury, create an ordinance that says all new driveways in the parish are required to install appropriate corporate or link? I, I know that.
I know that they do, at our office, a lot of times, it might be a junction where state and auto come together, and by default, they may go state side, that's our drainage, you know, the water might be running that way, and so you back it up on our side, even though you did have to come to us to get a permit.
Something down, before you can put one down, they have to inspect it to make sure it's the right size to put down.
And we can have covers put in the, if it comes, we'll put a cover down.
But that's only a hard road, and that's not one, where do we get some more teeth?
Now, I know that the state road, like when I came off of my road, I had to go to that place right down nineteen.
If the water.
They had to come over and tell me what I was doing. Now, I don't know what our ordinance says about that, I don't, I don't, and I know we got someone to do it.
There's a teenager, there's a teenager position, or not even still, people that live on our path don't have covers, what's the challenge, what's the connection?
It's a bunch of them.
Not a question.
For here before, all that.
I remember a year before, all that thing, I'll take the same time, we just don't have, like, the problem they had within the road, and poor.
The thing.
Like, yeah, that's pretty sad.
That's, that's just one example. It kind of follows that little thing where it comes out.
I still thought if anyone do, I have more gravel roads in my parish, all of yours have combined, and I have three through one, that's a deal. Ain't no way you, these crack, that we could blacktop and gravel on your property, we still have the money and the revenue to do it.
And I think that's important for that, those people on Larnish Lane to hear that, and to, to be able to realize that, because they have, they are working with an attorney. And have, they have sent, uh, a letter here, concerning it.
Do the MABW attorney win the time?
So, I mean, they're serious about it, is what I'm trying to say, they're very serious about it. But I think a lot is just being open and letting them know, you know, why. And they gave a lot of information there, from the people that we hear.
But they work with their time, because they live on a gravel road.
Because we work blacktop. And they indicated that we haven't been doing anything with it, but we have. I have a whole page of stuff. So.
Okay, let's just get the move on, okay? A little more, you actually, you just want to give the price assessment?
Well. Yeah, I made a motion that, um, we get the engineers to come out and give a price assessment on.
Where, where are they at on the, that we're talking about?
I don't believe that number, I have to, and we've been trying to watch more.
But watch out.
Yeah, I know that, that's why I was asking.
So I have, but they're still on the retaining.
Yeah, and we budgeted X amount of dollars for the retaining, with this, I wanna make sure we don't go over.
Go over.
I, I don't have a problem with those guys coming out, looking at the road, to pacify some people, if that's what we're trying to do. The easiest thing would be is if they would come here and just let them know that.
Well, I thought some of them, some of them would be.
They've got no more time, probably.
That been here before. And that's why I wanted to make sure we had addressed their other concerns.
I'm, I'm certainly not a problem.
Yeah, but they're not the Chinese company, we're trying to, okay, we're seeing. That's a, that's a, no, we cannot let that go. Let me look at that. So we have to, we have to, we have to. Next up is, how's it out? We mentioned this, that the location staff is all in town. And, and. Our crew finally was fifty-nine thousand, two eighty-four, out of forty-five, seventy-fourty, on vehicle for the CBO.
Sam Meyer.
Senator.
I'll voice my opinion, I need to voice my opinion. Yes, and I've told Mr. Williams, is that this was done way back.
Over a year.
Yeah, he should have had a truck a year ago. But I just don't think truck, if we're getting, we should be buying for that position. And I would give him my reasons for it, ain't nothing for him. And as I did said, I'm voting against the truck, I just think it's a wrong truck.
What they happened with, by a year ago.
Already, no, all, all, all for it.
We have, we have to rise to.
Yes.
CBO all out of truck.
Yes.
On state contract.
I want to voice my opinion.
I'm telling you this question, on, on this question, you made the motion, because it was a good car vehicle, that we should not have seen with fifty thousand dollars. Where the truck was on the state contract, which was then, then budgeted for sixty thousand dollars, and appointed the truck. So when the point is all of this issue, it was this for fifty thousand dollars, so the truck came in at fifty-nine, two. So we have motion to approve the amendment, fifty-nine thousand, twenty-four, to add to point of view from the CBO. There's money coming out the bill, so she has money to point to.
If everybody remembers that, when Jeff wanted to buy this truck, we all agreed to it, because I handed down stick for better.
Go to the.
So when he got through with it, he went to the yard, but we got Jerry to report on that, and Jerry down, they had something.
I'm sorry for that opinion, sorry. But anyway, let's find a man a truck, let him go get it.
Exactly, but your motion.
I made that motion.
We are.
He's amended the money.
Right, minimum of nine thousand, two eighty-four. Motion, did I say? Listen, who said what he does?
Y'all cut PO on it already, with the state price, was it the state price?
No, we, no, it was not, no, it was not.
I know I did.
No, it was not the state price of fifty thousand dollars.
No, where's, where's the PO that was cut? Cause I think there's a sign around here that was for the state contracted price. My question is, why are we doing it again? Y'all approved it in the budget.
Yeah, but not to see fifty thousand.
No, the budget says sixty. I read the.
The budget said fifty, the jury said not to see fifty thousand dollars, which is a reason, you got to write here, write a sign about a please pass name, thank you, okay? And the jury said not to see fifty thousand. That was the problem. If, if each point you have to have a minute of the week to test, to, to, to the point of.
Yes.
The auditors say we need to do it.
We have to, okay.
The auditor's not doing it.
Our minutes have to match what's approved by the jury.
Right, the jury.
Jury approved not to see fifty thousand dollars. And that's why we're doing it.
What we're doing to.
The auditors come, we'll have the writing down on the purchase order that was approved by the jury in the minutes, all our documentation, all our documentation will be correct. And we won't have a problem with that, being our own person, so we just make it sure.
Everything we did, in the, do what's right. The jury made the final decision, I don't make it, you don't make it, the jury as a whole make the decision.
It's done now.
Yeah, no.
The jury misses sound, they just, they keep talking.
I signed, there's nothing suspicious signed.
You probably, you probably, I worked successfully, so don't worry about that.
Okay. But that was in the discussion. Six year old. Mr. ZR. Corner of Zachal Chamber. You go back, go back, six years, hooking it forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Julia Porter, I'm the director of Zachal Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, we're excited to host our annual awards banquet here in Dappel. And I'm here today to request whatever permits I need to, to host this event.
Where are y'all happening there?
Just wanna be at the Lake Epple Hill in Dappel.
That's a little barn.
Yeah, and on September nineteenth, twenty five, uh.
Y'all, y'all just asked for a part?
Yes, we will be serving, they're gonna be nice.
Nice.
I make a motion that we.
I'm sorry.
And we're pushing. We're pushing. Couldn't come over, a lot of papers.
Ah, thank you, ladies.
Pa, performance.
Well, thank you, man.
Some things we talked about a long time, don't we?
Let's move on, approve the stolen camera that had field. You're a big worker.
Okay, I had to put on there, uh, you know, we've been having some problems with some dunks in certain areas, and this is after the fall, but recently, someone came, uh, down at Field Lane, and they dumped out a hole, uh, bedroom, set from all kinds of stuff, I took some pictures of it. But, um, I think, um, we need to put some cameras up in that area, and try to catch some of these people.
Do we still have any cameras that were, that we were putting out?
I'm getting a program of the cameras, cause we got five of them, I got one today, so I can go through there, set it all up, but you gotta be able to put them.
Do they have the ones that send?
It's a, it's a cell phone. Hey, so it'll send it out, we're gonna send it, set it up in Frosty's phone, so it'll go straight to him. So if somebody's helping, it'll be a picture.
So I'm, if we, if the community, they, I like to commend them, they've done a real good job, in cleaning up, and I've always jury as well, cleaning up that area, and that park is real nice, and we started utilizing it now, we had just had a family, had their family reunion, it was real nice, everything looked good, they had a model rock parade, they had a Christmas parade, they got a backup school thing for these kids in September. And we're just trying to keep the area looking nice and clean.
You got a work list cut, it was.
I wonder about Simmons Lane, are we working toward getting the camera out there?
We got five, we're gonna be putting them out. And I made, I, I made a motion, uh.
Senator.
And what's question, all the papers?
And as far as Simmons Lane, um, so I wasn't aware of that.
I went down today.
Yeah, and he had those cameras, so again, so we can, we can go ahead and.
Get them out there tonight. Hey, I don't think putting cameras out means a motion, we're just doing it.
We doing it.
But, but I think if a juror calls in and says, hey, I'm out, I'm told, get them out there ASAP, I'm sick of it, I'm sick of it.
And that's a wish to God, that's a example.
Yeah, I promise you, if she put them in front of Sam, he's gonna take it. You make an exact order, you, the rest will push. I said, give us a fleet of cameras.
Let's move on. Introduction of orders to regulate and discharge of fire on a near roads, and whether, I thought they all, had all this, I think that it could be discharged of fire to two hundred fifty feet of fire.
I know the, the state, the state of wildlife and fisheries is a hundred.
Cause we start to learn to.
I'm saying a lot.
We, we start from that, it's so good for the big point, for the, the property line.
Uh, I don't think, I don't think we have a property line.
We have a property line ordinance?
Yeah.
No, we don't have, Wesley Shand does.
Yeah.
And we talked about it several times. It's came up over the years several times, and it was something, you know, getting a lot more people shooting and stuff out there, and you know, how would the Federated able to speak on this, and I would, what's going on?
We're having a lot of issues, um, as land is developed, the tracks are getting smaller, and so more residents, and we've had complaints from some saying that adjacent neighbors are fired, it's not just a noise issue, it's more of a public safety. And so some of this is preliminary, we're trying to get a basis for this. I didn't feel like the property line, especially, was somewhere we wanted to go, it's kinda gets into that infringing property rights and gun rights type thing, but I felt like we could meet a middle ground with this, saying residents are reasonably, presumably occupied residents.
So what, what have they done, they shooting, they been shooting next door?
Yes.
That's a share issue.
Well, and they told them there was nothing on the books, and we, and we couldn't find anything at our local level that would cover that beyond the noise issue, so this is trying to mitigate some of that.
With that all, that's a broken thing.
That was my fault.
Well, that's, that's gonna affect, like, um, the shooting range, it won't affect that out there? Okay, what about the high fence place? You know, that somebody referred to as Jurassic Park field.
If you start. The, right now, what we're looking at, as far as our ordinance, is the law from, from the road, is the same thing what it is now. So wildlife and fisheries and gun force, uh, hunting and discharge of the fire on, on roads, how it would affect the public liberties, a hundred feet from the center line, isn't legal.
Which is what we're kind of advocating, as you can see, and some of these other things regarding residents were taken from adjacent parishes, so it's not like.
It's not like we're really hitting the wheel, a lot of this is coming from other agencies or other level goings.
We have a lot of that, but, matter of the stuff.
And anything you might want to add, take out, uh, we just set it out there, so you can just turn it in, email it, mission, mission, so it's ready.
Should we get all these to turn to back doors?
Yeah, and what we're gonna do, they sent it to me, uh, the clinic, the clinic sent it to me, we'll go through and tighten it up a lot, you know, if y'all wanna introduce it tonight, have a public hearing, advertise it, have a public hearing by the next, uh, in about a month, we can have it all weathered by hand, if you want to do that. I'll be fine with that, once we can, we can do that.
I'd like to make that as a motion.
I've got a question though. Would this, would this mean I couldn't shoot a copperhead with my twenty-two pistol?
No, because in.
In the ordinance, it says that, like self-defense, it has some accommodations for that, if you're the resident, owner of the residence, things like that, it has accommodations for that.
Cause I, I'm, I'm going where she's going with me, not cause I do where I live, we have dogs and stuff that come on our place, I get dogs coming in and having my children, camp up on the tractor beam that wouldn't ever move, and I have to care that myself.
That's right, and it says that, so it's very clear, you can't protect yourself, it's not gonna affect you in that way, it's, uh.
And also we went where, you know, some people they shoot, we have in their, in their field, they're fully equipped and comforted, so it wouldn't just be like one shot, two shot, you know, to just.
But that is gonna affect, it's not gonna affect like that, I think, over and over again, but not just one. No, I don't think that interferes with the more, uh.
Ms. Christie, what we can do, we can draft it, we can email it to the juror, we can provide y'all's comments back to me, and I can structure it where we can accommodate all jurors' concerns, is that good? About, you know, a couple of weeks, probably about two weeks out, we should have a good hard draft of it, and it's gonna be advertised in the newspaper, we can have a public hearing on it next month, and a public hearing, anybody in the public can address it, we, we concerned if they.
And what's that, Dallas?
So we're only just introducing.
Yeah. This on the dinner, to give, as you know, way to go back to y'all, and that's it. Cause the lady didn't receive, Mr. Alves, he cut it.
I'm waiting, it's, uh, gate's not open, it's not devastated, it's just not open, not closing, so it needs to be fixed completely, so we can be, we can be closing up it's open.
I'm reading some damage, we knocked it down, bent it up, we got.
Well, it's back up, I'm running over.
We got it back up, we just wanted to be pretty bad.
So, so I got a call this morning, it's pretty open, a call from Chris, a call from Chris, a call from Chris, and, uh, my, my take was, is it was a security issue, let's get it fixed. I wanted to put it on the agenda and talk, so everybody here knew tonight, my question is, I mean, this is what we need to find out, I did make a phone call today, because I didn't wanna step out of course, I wanted to come to you. Uh, we need to call Waste Row and find out how they wanna do this, do they wanna make an insurance claim, do they want us to pay for it, do they wanna be killed directly, or do they want, uh?
They called the.
So we need, um, we should reach out to Waste Row, someone needed to come up today, and then I guess, after I spoke with them, it's been an hour or two, I spoke with the wardens before the meeting, everything's secured at the jail, and Waste Row is gonna take care of everything. So at this point, there's nothing else to do.
So they're gonna hire somebody to fix it?
Someone actually already came out today to secure it, they're gonna be working with, um, the company that's, uh, already been doing things for things up there, but the wardens told me at this point, that was like twenty weeks, everything's, uh, everything's going to, so we're very fine with it.
So did they come see you?
Me? No.
Well, I did, he did go, um, when he came in, I informed him about it, he did go and get him to see, but.
It's bad.
I, I, I know, I think.
It's not a fixable thing, they're gonna have to replace it now, but.
Yeah.
I think the question's gonna come to play, if insurance companies evolve, they're not gonna better it, they're just gonna keep it, just, you know, they're gonna only pay for what was there, right? I don't think they're gonna pay for an extremely nicer gate that was.
No, I don't think anybody's looking for that, I think they just, because I know that great big tall structure was from the old gate, and it's not even needed.
I think we are looking for that, and, um, I think we are looking for that, and, um...
Of course, I have a table, that we were like, this is, uh... And, and Chris, this morning, it looked a whole lot worse than that video that you sent me, it looked a lot worse.
I get that, it was pretty bad.
Pretty bad. I mean, I, I just see it all.
I just wanted everybody to know what was going on, I know when I called Mr. Rich, he was on that fast, uh... After I talked to Chris Lewis, I did, he went, Ms. Christie went, I had a video, uh, I know Kenny and Tom, they're contractors, they worked on their stuff before, when they were home away, I think he was just looking. My response was, is Waste Pro is gonna pay for this, because they did damage.
He spoke with Mr. Murphy also.
But I just wanted to know how they wanted it done, that they want it.
At this point, no one's saying that a jury needs to cover anything.
And I'm sure they would rather pay for it than make an insurance claim. I feel quite sure of that.
He, I mean, someone was pretty stupid about, he, he, he satisfied his lawyer.
Do you want them to make a motion of a preemptive motion?
Public work and equipment, Mr. David, Chris.
I have a question, Mr. McCray.
Sure.
Uh, about a year and a half ago. We had talked about possibly getting our, let's start a question here, can we get that for discussion on our agenda later in the week?
You don't have a day to do that, we're pretty, uh...
Our question is, how about the tax trouble?
It's about this thing in September.
September. Oh, I, I thought we was getting that.
Close to the last week, we're living, that's, that's...
July, first off, they seem to be here pretty quick.
It's coming, I guess. Here's something that's gonna be a problem, Mr. Richard Oliver.
Well, it's pretty sad, we talked about the, uh, the leak at courthouse. And, uh, Mr. Williams, do you have any, do you have a rate on that, if you call anybody yet?
So Cribs is gonna be the only company that's gonna touch it, uh, they're the ones that's done it before, haven't got them to come out and give any kind of estimate, I know y'all acquired three bids. That's gonna be extremely tough to do, and this is a big...
On the, on the courthouse, it's a historical thing, and I think, I think we can do, because we have, we have approved people that can work on the courthouse, and that's it.
Well, you gotta get them to do it, because I called six, eight months when I was on, committed first time, and, and they responded, but then it never came. Now, I think that's been going on.
That's a slate roof.
And that's the hard, that's the hardest thing about it, cause I mean, you give a price, a quote on a slate roof, you don't know how far you have to take, you keep taking off slate, at the slate of the slate, and it could add up substantially pretty quick.
But as you know, anyone cannot work on the courthouse, a specialized person is what they're doing.
If you can get, get those guys up here, and, and I think, I think we'll talk the same and, and talk about the three bids, I know we have a certain select group of contractors that are the only ones that work on that, because it's like historical or something like that. So I, I don't think the three, and like I say, they don't matter this time, but I think they're...
Well, I, I've been talking with Ms. Harris, and, and what we're trying to do is kind of get a list of all the buildings that we own, right? What needs to be done, so that way we can really start hunting them down.
The only other person I know that does slate roofing, I mean, you saw Alan's.
Yeah.
His guys do slate.
Okay.
There's a company, Van Grugge, and this was today, um, Miranda called from the jail. Um, the judge said, I can't remember the name of the company, I think it starts with an T or something, and Van Grugge may be a local company, I had it written down.
Don't come up with a courthouse, Cribs.
The judge, the judge says that, the judge says that they need to work at courthouse before, I don't know.
Heaven, Cribs, heaven, Cribs.
Tell me to give that information.
Right.
As Cribs, I can vouch for it, I know that for a fact, because I want you to, I want you to mention that this is ten years ago, you get money to repair the courthouse, five million dollars, and the state said, if you put no money in the courthouse, you must not tell your neighbor. Those specialized people go to the courthouse, anyone cannot work on the courthouse.
I know since I've been here, it's always been that problem.
We made that motion, and we can press what's...
What about, like, for instance, I mean, it's extremely hot and dry, right? Well, the sprinkler system has, has a huge leak in it, the meter's turned off. I'd like to see about getting that fixed, you know, so we can water the lawn.
You take care of the courthouse, you do that.
You know, I know we talked about the lights around the trees, and we've been talking about that for a year, right? I'd love to see that kind of come back.
You can look funny out there, carry water to water those oak trees.
You know, it's...
Yeah, they got their bathroom so good.
I lost a motion.
Say it.
I know we had a roof on top of my manager's courthouse, to be able to fix it. Okay, well, I can have some of that out there.
Um, I'm just going to, I'm sure everybody may, well, may not know by now, but River Road is not being used anymore, has an access to Arcosa. Um, wanted to let you all know that. And as far as Waste Pro, just today, right, right before the meeting, maybe about one thirty, Jolene did send me the requested complaint log, I told you I would get back with you all within a month. So I didn't get a chance to go through it and compare it to her, um, to ours, but at the next meeting, I should have my numbers posted, I know that she said, there's about forty-four on their list, they changed over in their system.
I'm interested.
That was before the month. Um, I did see about, Kelsey has a list, so I did see about twenty-three, but that's not emails, so, and that's before the month.
So when we report the complaints to you, or I mean to Kelsey, she calls them with the complaints, or we still have to call them too?
Whatever you...
So that...
Yeah, to Kelsey, she'll call them, and she keeps it on her log, so I just wanna kind of see too, if the logs that she has when she calls, if they're included on the log as well. For some calls, they will be that we don't need, but every call that we have, they should have, cause Kelsey's calling them after that, and she's sending them an email, so it's all about them.
And this was very beneficial, and I think, you know, we went for it right around the parish, meaning if you got stuff in life and why, and put it out, show them, they can all go with that.
Have you seen improvements since July?
Well, I know they can give more information to us, sometimes it's late, and I did mention to them today, if they see something going off, don't wait until later, yeah, to let us know.
They did reach back out to me, I think, probably about a week or two ago, and I spent, it didn't seem like it was going to ever happen over here. Yeah, I don't see any improvement since they came, that's, that's a problem.
Yeah.
If they're trying to fix the problem, it's always that.
And we know everyone does not have Facebook, but Kelsey, when she know they're running late, they're reaching streets, she's sending an email to all of the jurors to let you all know that they're behind, they haven't picked up, she's saying they'll pick up the next day, and we've been putting it on Facebook as well. You know, cause Kelsey up in the north face, so, and doing that, um, with them, but I can have the numbers for July at the next meeting.
Any other things?
Yes, I have a couple more things, so... Okay, so the items that were left in the furniture store, um, Mr. Williams, Miss Wynn, Keith, and myself, we did go to the furniture store last week. And the items that are still in the furniture store, they're gonna be moved out on tomorrow. And there was about, um, sixty pieces of pride, and with sixty horses, at most, that, that was there, so we're supposed to get out there on tomorrow. I spoke with Mr. Klein here, who's at the last minute meeting, there was, or the meeting before that, there was some talk about the animal shelter and the money that's supposed to be coming in. He did verify for me today that it's, um, for an animal shelter, the funds will not have to go through the police jury, and it's gonna be for the shelter on Allen's, yeah. So, you don't have to worry about them, anything with those funds, they won't come. Yeah, Klein, he did, um, clarify that for me today, and State Burn, am I taking?
I'm good.
State burn ban, Mr. Bueller let me know today at five o'clock, they had the prison disappear, and I think all of you have something in your binders, um, on adjudicated property. I spoke with the officer about the adjudicated property, there's good bits here in the parish, I spoke with Mr. Lewis also about it, I want to see, well, would like to get letters out, get one of his, equivalent, some letters out about, uh, adjudicated property. But it's, it's, it's quite a few, and I think no, nothing has really been, besides what, um, civic source has been doing with it, I don't think anything has been done, it's probably, um, this is Jay all to, to, to the thing to the, the residents about adjudicated property.
Ms. Harris, could you, would you email me that, I don't see that one got me that time back.
Really? You didn't want to email?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I, I got, yeah, I, I have.
You need... So I knew when I gave it to you, that you had a moment, so, so, and there's also, um, our corporate work. In your binders for the month of July, from, from Miss Wynn, and I believe that's... Oh, and the closing, it's Thursday.
Well, I'm not sure, I think that's about what Julie is.
She, um, did say she will, she wants to be back, um, tomorrow, so we'll just see.
Uh, Mr. Mike, can y'all be at me Thursday at five thirty, please, if you're...
All right, just a couple of things, the state put out a notice today, effectively five o'clock, for about statewide burn ban. Uh, I got a letter, Mr. Lewis signed a while ago, a issuing for the parish, cause when the state does it, it's a recommendation, we have a, a option to be able to opt in or opt out, so, all. I'll be sending it to Department of Agriculture in Forest Street, filing this police force office, and sending it to go sell file, and it is, so we'll be all fully legal up there tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna send you a copy.
How about the time, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's dry, I mean, we have one in Woodland, they looked in on it three times, they had dump funnel on it today, which is expensive, but it's so dry that it's just burning down deep. And regular water is not putting it out right now. You look at ponds right now, all the ponds, they probably have them in the fair, it probably got any water left in them.
I found about sixty.
Yeah. So, we got that, uh, done, uh, just kind of update you on some of my grants and all of them here. Hey, we got, uh, forty thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and eight cents coming in on the EMPG grant. Fourteen thousand of it is gonna be used for Starlink satellites, what I need to know is who we need to meet with. I'm giving the prices for what we spend on the internet here, a month, this would be right now at two hundred fifty dollars a month, uh, per satellite. And I know right now, we're spending a lot more than that on each, each roof.
You're talking about, uh...
It's a Starlink satellite.
Online security?
No, no, this could be used here to police jury, if you can be, one could be a DPW, one could be a nine-one-one. Uh, you bounce off the satellite, so unless you lose all the satellites they're putting up, hey, you'll have it, the state's paying for all the satellites, they paying for the first year of the satellite.
And we just got to pick it up after a year?
We would have to pick it up after a year, we getting a horrible one too, so if we have a disaster like Ida, we can have that on the command trailer, we could turn it, call, tell them to turn it on, we could have internet access, where we don't have it normally on landlines.
We need to, uh, we, we're gonna have to have finance committee, and we need a number of what you're looking at, so we can figure out a price, and what we can start buzzing in after the first year.
Well, that's why I, I put a request in today to Mr. Julie to pull what we're paying for each section. Right now, I know what I'm paying at, uh, nine-one-one for the internet, I can, I can pay for all three satellite use, just for what I'm paying at one site.
Well, it's an easy fix, you just pay for all three, and we could do it.
Actually, it's a problem, that'd be cheap. All right, I'll be here. Uh, we have another EMPG and she ship grant that I'll be putting in for in September, it's due in October. Hey, to be able to turn in, I'm getting with some of them, hey, giving my ideas, hey, here's some of the stuff we can get, all these are reimbursable. So I still got about thirty-three thousand coming back for wonder grants already, where we bought radios, if y'all remember, model enforcement, I'm still waiting on that money to come in. We already got one checked for fourteen thousand back in.
We not the obligation, we got money coming, we can do it.
Well, we're gonna have to do a little bit, because we, I worked with Yamiche the other day, but we spent half a day in here trying to get all this stuff done, because we had somebody that dropped the ball, and, uh, wasn't, we can't spend money till we get a, uh, okay to do it. Well, we got the okay to end of June, and there's no way physically I can spend the money and get it in and have it all receipts turned in by the end of August, there's just no way possible.
Nothing.
We got most of it, uh, we worked on it, we got most of it back, we're still trying to work some other ways around on it. So September, we'll have that amount right there, and that's probably gonna be right at eighty-one thousand dollars on it, so I'll be getting with the finance committee for that, so...
Can y'all come on Thursday, Mr. Mike?
Yeah.
Kyle, can you come Thursday?
Maybe, I don't know.
Can you please try, cause I have, uh, people's first football on Thursday, so, yeah, I'm trying. So y'all can take care of that for me, that would be awesome.
You wanna sign anything on Thursday?
Well, we, it's gonna be a lot of discussion Thursday about cost on bridges, and you, things that are major, so it could just be beneficial for us, we can be there, that way we can have a hand on what's coming.
I think that's what we're...
That, that's it.
They say what can be missed or true is not in the public office.
Somebody did that statement. That's fine. I, I made that motion, so...
We don't, we're not ready to adopt it yet.
So we're just approving it together, probably.
Tuesday, that's Tuesday.
We checking here for, to help.
Y'all have, y'all said you want to approve A and G?
Well, A to L.
A to, yeah, okay, that's a motion, yes?
We discussed the pool of, um, not defended ourselves, probably true.
Mr. Michael Cheetham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Fennick?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Pete Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakley?
Yes.
President Littleton?
Yes.
I did recommend the approval of that, and it's called, you have to have a full review.
So, can I get a motion taken from the board?
I have to prove, you want to discuss, all the things?
Ah.
Mr. Lewis, I, I have, um, Tuesday, September fifth, that means you know, be on the Tuesday, because Labor Day, what time would you like?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, like Jeff.
And here's a copy of the ordinance, and you find the proposed ordinance, already ordered. No, so we don't start it.
Probably can.
I just want the jury to be aware, one of those maps y'all approved tonight was an unnecessary map. It was mandated on the people, now a man that paid for it doesn't want to reimburse it, but I've already talked it over with Jeff, about the map was not required, and if it would have been a four or five hundred dollar map, the jury would have been liable for that, because it was mandated by this office, and it was unnecessary. That piece of property hasn't been divided or anything since the early nineteen hundreds. And it says because it didn't have planning zones, signatures on it, doesn't mean anything, it's a boundary map. So, I want to make y'all aware of the fact, you dodged the bullet this time, because the man made the arrangements to make it happen, and not delay the people anymore, and that's the reason we approved the maps, because they've been delayed long enough, right, what they're trying to do. The jury needs to be aware of that.
Do you bother with too much, thank you. Come to come in. There will be, uh, a lot of there, four, if you want to pass it.
Here, at the.
At the church.
At the church.
Good evening, Ms. Tegra Brown, I'm here, um, I think we guys discussed repaving, I mean, blacktop and ladders. Yes, can I inquire what the result was?
The engineers.
Okay, what about the blacktop?
The blacktop?
Yes.
The engineers are gonna go assess it and come back and report to us, uh, the condition of the road, uh, blacktopping is pretty much off the table for, for blacktop roads, I mean, rattle roads, because our hard surface roads are such.
Disrepair.
Yes, that it wouldn't be fair to the rest of the parish to go add a new blacktop, when they have ones that they can't even drive.
Okay, how about the fact that we've been asking for blacktoping for years, for years, and we're still waiting?
And so is every other, probably, we get calls from everybody, from every driver in this parish to be blacktopped. The good part about the driver is we can send the gray ground and slick it off when it gets rough. When a hard surface road falls apart, it's just vulnerable.
Well, let's look at this, you will be repairing blacktop roads as long as they are blacktop roads. So what you're saying is, rattle roads will never be blacktop in that case?
I'm not saying never.
Okay. Never at all. Well, we need to visit blacktop and ladders lane, because we can't just say that the other roads are in disrepair, because that's not a.
How long?
Can you let it finish? That is not a ladders lane issue, that the police jury has allowed the other roads to go into disrepair. That, that's a police jury issue. That's a, you guys have not been able to drive.
We have not allowed, it happens, because that's.
He said it's in disrepair. He didn't say, hey, we have a few issues and we're resolving them, he said they're in disrepair. Disrepair means no one has repaired those roads, and they have gone and collected.
In time, it, oh, we can't, it has, it was just, it wasn't that. Now, I want the lawyer to watch it out, not just this, just cause it happened yesterday.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's not an issue that happened yesterday, it's been an issue that has amounted over time, and what Mr., did it, Mr. Hall? What Mr. Hall is telling me is that we are not going to do anything to ladders lane, because the police jury has neglected its job with other blacktop roads. That's right. And that's not okay.
How, how long is?
Oh, I'm not sure, but it can't be more than a mile or some, or so.
We got, uh, we had an estimate, I'm pretty sure, for Andrew, for the rattle road, that was a mile long, that was like one, what was it called? One point three million to do a rattle road.
Okay.
We don't have.
We don't have that kind of money.
But you have money to repair, how much is it costing to repair the other blacktop roads? Because if you're telling me you can't repair mine, or you don't have, you don't have the funds to blacktop one road, then you're also telling me you don't have the funds to repair these blacktop roads that are in disrepair.
Well, it stayed here for, uh, his year, previous years, and they would not over the any rattle road.
Well, this is a new police jury.
I know.
And we cannot continue to just use the votes of old police jurors.
The jury that's good would not repair over the any rattle road in this state, until we all, you know, do all best, soon, just let it go. So, every road in this parish, might just have tried one rattle road, any duty comes, all duty can buy me this thing, and I would love to see every one of them over it, I would love to, but the money's just not there to do it. If you can win it up, and give me five million, ten million dollars, we'll pay, we'll pay every road this thing.
Okay, but also, that you have the funding that continues to go to the water company, when there is funding, for the water company, that they can get without bothering the grant that should come here. Um, I know you get grants, there's no other way you can, you can't get grants.
Somebody cap it up, you, did a gap money?
The gap money?
That way for the town, not just for the jury, we got five municipal, five for that one hundred fifty thousand dollars of Medicaid for this path. Use channel five, some.
Yes, for the funds that should go here, there, there is funds for the water district, that, that is going, that's, that's not being used, that's not being requested, because the money that could be here, that could be used for roads, is being taken by the water district. So you're telling me about funds that you don't have, when it, it seems like you're not even, I don't know if you guys talk to the water district?
We'll point to one, we'll talk to one.
Well, you should have clear communication.
Every year, every year.
Yes, well, there is money on the table that's not being used apparently, or that's not being requested, from the, from the police jury, but my issue is, we're not gonna sit around and this be ten more years and that road has not been buttered top. Because you guys keep saying that, and you keep giving me excuses about why the road has not been repaired, and again, the disrepair of the other roads is not a ladders lane issue.
That's it, it's much as much as all of that, it was on this path to repair.
Yeah, but again, my mother was here around this time last year, I bet Kent Road gets repaired, cause she stated that. I bet your road gets repaired, every opportunity, it needs to be repaired.
Prepared before I got on it.
But it gets repaired when it needs to be.
Right. Ladders lane gray, work, like, every, I go to pay.
You guys neglect that road.
Children, children.
Recently, because guess what, you were here in, in September, recently, I had to come here and talk about the lack of maintenance to ladders lane, last September, because no one was coming, you guys recently picked up the trash, I mean, mowed the grass there. I've never seen anyone come and mow the grass down ladders lane, y'all can make reports all day long, I'm there. Them, the, the grass down ladders lane was recently mowed, maybe two weeks ago, no one ever comes to mow the grass, and you wanna know why? The grass mowed, because I sent a letter, so somebody hopped up and came and did a little bit of work to ladders lane, but no one maintenance it. Like you do, they come through and they do run the gravel every now and then, every now and then. But whoever is writing these reports saying they coming down that road, they're lying. Come on. They're lying, I'm there, I'm there every day, nobody's coming down that lane, it's only been recently.
Before the weekend.
Whatever it is, they're lying, it's a flat out lie. It's a flat out lie, call your maintenance workers, they are not coming down that lane, it wasn't until last September when I came and they fuss about the, the trash down the lane, that somebody came and picked up the trash, me and this little girl right here, picked up the, the trash down ladders lane. Nobody else is coming down that lane and doing any work, they come and they run and they pull that gravel down every blue moon. But nobody's really doing any work to that lane.
Well, I, I, I motivated them rotation.
Hey, I don't care about the rotation, they're not coming, you could tell me about the schedules, you could tell me about what's on paper, they're not coming. There's trash down that lane now, I raised that issue with that, with the, um, the pellet company down there, and that their workers are the ones who are throwing the trash out all down the lane.
No, the people live on that road.
No, no.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I didn't call you a lot, I live on a road, people live, they go, the ones that pressure their own road. I mean, they come, you haven't seen them doing the trash, just have, everyone just have.
It's not enough people that live down there, it's just amount to the amount of trash. I'm telling you, I've seen the trash thrown out, but there is not the maintenance that you guys are saying happening to that road, that's actually happening to it, but we're gonna continue to revisit blacktop and ladders lane until ladders lane is back top.
Thank you, I thank you.
I keep hearing it. Keep hearing it, and it's not happening.
Well, engineers are going out now.
Yeah, because I sent a letter, the engineer should have came out, isn't it? Oh, wait, yes, it was. Yes, it was, cause I sent the letter to O'Quinn a week or two ago, asking her for an engineer, the engineer's not coming out there for no reason. The only, the only reason things are moving in ladders lane is because I am making a request that it happen. Again, I came up here September last year, nothing happened, I sent a letter two weeks ago, now y'all about, I asked for an engineer. I'm the one who said the least you can do is send an engineer out to look at the road and see why it's flooded. Y'all not doing SWAT unless somebody sticks a hot iron to y'all behind to make you do it.
Thank you, Miss Brown.
Oh, thank you.
I will, I will say this, um, just so Ms. Brown will know, before she came, I don't know if she was watching before she came, but also we may want to let her know that the engineers are going out, you all did not promise any blacktop, and there was also talk about the culverts, there's, we already know, if that's an issue, there's only so much that the jury can do, if the culverts happen to be a problem, and the residents on ladders lane do not replace the culverts. So just so she'll know that, if it comes up already, and as far as the L gap, the police jury, and I can believe this year, maybe next year, year last year, and it usually often, you all did, um, approve L gap, but it was for the water district to replace some lines, so.
And there is the grant funding for the water district, that they can get outside of L gap.
So, C W E L is also one, but we all, you all did approve that, it was used today, so, just wanted to make sure she was aware of the culvert situation.
I am, I, I, again, um, Ms. Lamisha, I talked to O'Quinn about it. I'm not unaware of anything that's going on, I raised the issues to her.
Nothing different.
Well, this is in the conversation right before you came.
I'm sorry, not even Ms. O'Quinn, Dr. O'Quinn, I apologize, um, Dr. O'Quinn, uh, I spoke with her. I spoke with her before, I spoke with her before we came out here last year, I spoke with her before I came out here this time. Again, the only reason something is happening is because I raised the issue, that's it. Even with the, the culvert, we, I raised that issue.
Yeah, I know, I know there, I received the email.
Right.
And I did forward it to Dr. O.
And she called me, yeah.
But there was conversation before you came, by the jury, about the culverts.
A year later.
Well, I just wanted to let you know, in case you came back up. Cross.